Good evening. It's Monday, December 16th, and this is a meeting of the Southborough Planning Board. The planning board is now in session. The first item on the agenda is a discussion item, Proposed Accessory Dwelling Unit Bylaw and Regulations. So as of yet, we don't have the bylaw. The regulations came out last week. And they're having a comment period starting December 20th, ending January 10th, and they plan on having their final regulations prior to 2/2.
This is the state?
This is the state. EOHLC promulgated the regulations. So if we want to add any comment, when do we hear? Next, January 6th?
January 6th.
Yeah, so we'll have time if we want to comment at all.
And just so you're aware, everybody knows, Mimi, I mean, Colleen is using an app to try and transcribe the meeting. So if everyone can just talk into the microphone, just remember, like, give it some little more oomph tonight, if you remember. But it should be picking up anything in here. But just that's what that is, so nobody is concerned with that.
And when is the first public hearing for?
Well, we had anticipated that we would do the Warren Article Public Hearings for the zoning amendments on January 6th. However, that would mean we'd have to put them in the paper this Wednesday. But what we need to do first is get the bylaws back from Town Council. And right now, there are two of them, is that ADU bylaw, and then there's the special permit for shared parking facilities that was generated out of the Building Department and discussed at the working group we have with them. Those are both at Town Council. When they come back, they'll need to go to the Select Board as zoning amendments, then get recommended to the Planning Board as the process. So I'm anticipating we could start that on January 27th, our next meeting, the second meeting in January. And we'll still have February 10th, February 24th, March 10th, March 24th. That's, we'll still have four meetings after that. So we should have sufficient time. But if we do it this way, we can get them in the paper properly. It can go from the Select Board to the Planning Board as zoning amendments are required to be recommended. If that works, if everyone's happy with that. Okay.
Anything else on that?
Oh, not for me.
One thing that I learned from the regulations, that a single-family zoning district is any district that allows a single-family home. So in Southborough, it'd be everything except for industrial park. Move on from there to the next item on the agenda, discussion item, Proposed Zoning Amendments, Shared Parking Bylaw in Industrial Park Zone Additional Uses.
Would you like me to give a quick update?
Sure.
It's going to be very similar. So the proposed zoning amendments, the shared parking bylaw, there's a copy in your packet with some redline edits that came out of the zoning amendment working group with Chris Lund, the building commissioner, me, Mimi, Marguerite Landry, Lara Davis, the ZBA admin. That is currently at Town Council, just awaiting feedback. Similar to the ADU bylaw is being drafted by Town Council. So once those come in, we will, like I said, send them to the Select Board. The third item is the industrial park zone, the additional uses. So the question is, where should that get generated out of? Is that something that planning should draft? Is that something that should come from the EDC, proposed uses? I'm just not sure where, where, how that's coming together. If we want that on this town meeting, then we'll need to work to get something. And it could be very basic as just adding a couple uses if we maybe have another meeting or two with the zoning amendment group to see, and Leah Emerson is part of that group as well. It's simple as adding a use right to the list, maybe not change anything yet. Athletic facility, recreational facilities, start with that, and then, you know, see how that works. If anybody has suggestion for any additional uses, we could consider that during the public hearing process, too.
Ms. Houlihan?
Thank you. Karina, a quick question on that particular bylaw. In your working group, have you discussed whether it would be, like, I think the low-lying fruit would be literally just changing it, right? So like, just getting the town used to it and adding specific uses in certain areas. Have you talked about, like, a massive overhaul to the, or has it really been just talking about little areas? Because I said I was doing that analysis, and I've pulled a lot of towns, like Marshfield, Hudson, Westboro. And so now that I've downloaded everything, now you can use ChatGPT. You populate ChatGPT, and you ask it to create a table based on all the use regulations and how it's, what they use and what their language is. So I think I'll have something more comprehensive that I can give you for your next meeting. And then you can look at and say, what do we want to include or not into our own uses?
That would be great, because we haven't really discussed any detail on it. We started with the parking, the shared parking, kind of dominated the conversation, so we could get it on track.
Yeah.
And we knew the ADU was going to be prepared by Town Council. So that would be great. Then maybe we can make another meeting or two happen and get it on the same schedule as.
I would like to. I think we should update that language, definitely, for, like, athletic facilities or, you know, fitness centers and stuff like that. So minimally.
Yep. And we'll get some feedback from the building commissioners, code enforcement officer, to see if, you know, because he's been here now. He's much more familiar with the code to give some maybe feedback on, wait, do, you know, how many changes of use do you want to add there? How many additional uses? And we should start with this, or
Got it.
Forget it impacts over here, here, and here, too.
Right.
Something like that. Yeah, I think that'd be great.
During the public hearings, you can always add more as people find issues with it, so.
Yeah.
That would be great, Marnie.
Thanks, Marnie. I forgot that you, I did know in the back of my head you had that in there.
And just a note on the shared parking, that, so the, the whole bylaw is pretty much the same, except for a couple lines at the beginning are stricken that reference shared parking. And then that shared parking is added, and that was from Northborough, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah. Any other discussion on that item?
And that will go into public hearing anyway. But the gist of it is that there'll be a special permit from the Planning Board for a shared parking facility that would take place during site plan review. So there's a reference to adding a line to chapter, 174-9 special permits, like accessory dwelling units, two-family conversions, et cetera. It'd be one of those items as well. Okay, sorry.
Next item on the agenda. Should we go planners' reports or the 40B discussions?
So, just so everybody understands what's going on here, we have set times for the public hearings at 7:00 PM for 250 Turnpike Road, 7:10 PM for 2 East Main Street, and 7:15 PM for 26 Meadow. So by open meeting law, we can't actually start the public hearings ahead of the scheduled times. So that's why we're going, and ticking off a few other items on our agenda, ahead of the public hearings. So now we're just figuring out what we're going to talk about next. Is there any harm in going to the 120 Turnpike item?
I can update on that. That's a quickie. So on December 11th, the ZBA deliberated. They went through the conditions that Town Council and Lara had worked on and voted to approve the 40B with the conditions. We shall see. So supposedly, the areas of the open space will have an easement on them. And hopefully, there was discussion on doing a tree inventory there. So if they take anything down, they'll have to put it back? Yes. Ms. Houlihan?
So the conditions were interesting. And what was interesting to me, as I guess they're still working on those conditions, or they're just finalizing them?
I think they're just finalizing them, because they didn't, there's no other meeting.
Because there was no condition that they actually had to convey the 6.2 acres. So is that part of the original?
Sorry, I think that there was a condition, I read them very quickly today, right after the requirement for a subdivision for the project. It was towards the end. Let me just open it and hold on.
So I missed it? So it was there? I didn't see specific language that said to actually convey it. And then I didn't know if that was just part of, because it went with the property and the prior condition. But they don't reference the prior conditions of the other land, the other approval.
Let me just take a quick peek, because I know I was reading something.
But I guess if this is what the zoning board has, I mean, there's, obviously, that's only one of many. I'm, I was surprised.
Let me just look down.
So number six, Marnie, the last, the last sentence in number six says, accordingly, the applicant revised the project by moving the proposed apartment building to an already developed area on the site and designating a 6.2 acre parcel on the northern portion of the property to be conveyed for open space purposes.
Lisa, where are you?
Number six, page three.
Of the decision?
Of the draft decision under project and property description.
Okay.
Sorry. Now, I don't know if that's enough, Marnie, but I know that it was referenced there as far as being conveyed.
I'd like to bring your attention to condition 33, draft, of the draft decision. The subdivision plan shall depict the open space parcel shown on the permitting plans as Lot 4C containing 6.2 acres. Such parcel, it's on page 10 of 18. And right, the condition right prior to that, number 32, is the final site plan shall include a final subdivision plan that is suitable for the board, meaning zoning board's endorsement and recording.
Thank you. I completely missed it.
No, that's okay. It was a long document.
So can, go ahead.
Sorry. Where does that leave us with the conveyance, then, of the land?
Then the Select Board is the jurisdiction for accepting the conveyance to town property, to the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
So they have a process that they now initiate. It doesn't, as far as the modification that they had come to us for and withdrawn to adjust that condition, remember the 2019 permit with the, with the parking garage and the courtyard improvements? And that is the one that had the original condition that said that that 6.2 acres was to be conveyed to the Conservation. And they, the proponent had come back and wanted to modify that, offering up some other mitigation to replace that. And it was around that time, they were kind of doing the 120, they were starting the 40B for 120. So they withdrew their application here, and were going to settle it under zoning board's jurisdiction, with Town Council following that along the road. So it's my understanding that the modification for that condition, or there is, doesn't need to be a modification for that condition, because they're doing that condition as part of this 40B. However, there is remaining office building site plan from everything that's gone on, that they do have to come back and get a modification for their site plan for the remaining office buildings, the lot that has the remaining office building. Because they cut out the 6.2 acres, and they're cutting out the 40B area in the parking lot. And now they have this smaller area of the two office buildings, which has to be reconciled.
Mimi, can I ask a question? So in looking at this, because there's a drainage easement, and there's grading on it, if Concom says that doesn't meet the requirements, what happens then? I'm just curious. I mean, Concom had concerns about it prior, based on clearcutting and whatnot. So what if Concom says this isn't acceptable, it doesn't meet the requirements of what we would consider preserved open space, and it's not in its natural state? What happens next?
Understood. If you read further, and I just want to read this little piece here of the draft decision by the ZBA for the 120 Turnpike 40B, number 33 condition, says such parcel shall be donated without consideration to the Conservation Commission prior to commencement of work or issuance of a building permit. No encroachments, construction work, clearing for buildings, or grading, except as may be permitted herein are allowed on, in such open space, which shall be for conservation and passive recreation, as may be designated by the Conservation Commission. A copy of the deed to the Conservation Commission is subject to the prior review and approval by Town Council. And then there's some additional language there. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the applicant has reported that it is required to reserve several easements in the 6.2 acre open space parcel for assorted purposes, including grading and drainage. The exact scope of these easements were not defined by the close of the hearing, and there's additional context there. So my guess is, if that does happen, what I know to do is consult Town Council.
Well, so it goes on further. Any and all drainage easements shall be maintained by the applicant in perpetuity. So I think Concom's concern was, the town didn't want to take the responsibility for those drainage swales. So hopefully, that alleviates that concern.
Okay. I was just concerned when I saw that there was grading and drainage.
Yeah.
Typically, that's not. And I didn't think that really met the requirement of the Planning Board's decision either. But again, I, it was just a question. Thank you.
Anything else on 120?
I mean, it's always good to just remind the public that the zoning board of appeals doesn't do site plan review as a matter of normal course of business. So the procedures and the requirements may not be the same as what an applicant would be doing with this board and this department. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Director, do the draft decision, because I think.
Paul, before you talk, you got to get some mic. Okay, I'm just saying, don't talk until you get over there, because it's real sensitive here.
Paul Carter, 6 Hillside Avenue. I reviewed the draft decision. I specifically requested it after the ZBA meeting, and it was provided by Laura, and also a copy of what the applicant had submitted that afternoon. And that was an easement plan, as I think you guys have, which showed easement all the way up to and including the drainage ditch. In answer to two questions, one, I've suggested some wording for the conservation land, saying it should be donated, accepted by the town, recorded at the registry before issuing the building permit. My understanding is that the conservation land under the special permit had been committed to, but it never went all the way through, because the Board of Select never accepted it. So we want to be sure that it is, it is accepted by all the boards, and I think it's important to state that. The other thing is that regarding the special permits, as I, meaning, Mimi, I think, pointed out, is that they still need a special permit for modification of the front lot. He, they, the lawyer referred to the 40B project as Lot Three, no, yeah. Yeah, Lot Three and Four at the hearing, inadvertently, perhaps. But that indicates that the 40B is only the two remaining lots, and not the front lot. So, and they didn't mention anything about, well, he mentioned something about those special permits being approved, and they're considering that any modification of that one lot, the special permits were approved. The last thing is that I think it's important to provide more detail about what's required for the definitive subdivision plan, that it be in accordance with the Planning Board rules and regulations. So we get something that is in fact a definitive subdivision plan that's recordable. So that's why I thought the wording relative to the subdivision of those lots, and the minimum frontage being on a designated right-of-way, they're proposing it be on an easement. An easement doesn't provide frontage, so it's not adequate. And the last thing talks about the slopes. They've got, they've got weeping at the bottom of the slopes, that's water coming out at the bottom of the hill. I have every reason to believe that water's going to come out all along that slope and destabilize the ground there, because there's already weeping at the bottom of the slope. And also, it's been reported that that parking lot is like a skating rink in the winter. So once they get into that slope, for one thing, they're going to want to use riprap, okay? They're proposing a two-on-one slope that's vegetated. All I'm saying is they should, and they're planning to do this, provide stabilization fabric, okay? And you can do that with a two-on-one slope, but not necessarily where you have groundwater coming out of the side of the hill. So I think it's, my experience in transportation projects, I've always had to show where the riprap was on the plans, because it's controversial, it's ugly, and I don't believe the Planning Board wants to see that whole slope riprapped. So that's why I'm suggesting that riprap only be, it's not shown on their plans. Needs to be shown on their plans if they're going to build it, that use of riprap needs to be approved as absolutely necessary by the building commissioner. And I guess I feel, I know they said the public hearing is closed, but I would think that the Planning Board should be able to comment on the draft approval.
Thank you, Paul. I think that they, they closed out this completely and voted to approve it. Well, as far as the 40B is, they.
They closed the public hearing, but you're on the board, you should be able to discuss this with the ZBA.
Well, you just got to come to the mic if you're talking, so that we can have.
Just because the ZBA is jurisdictional, and they already made their decision. And they're, supposedly, they took the several letters that we had already sent, and the several times we commented, under consideration. But they, they've already made their decision, so they're, I mean, we can say whatever we want, but I don't think anything's going anywhere. It's with Town Council and the ZBA admin right now, putting this, the final touches on this.
Yeah, what they said is it was approved based on being revision, based on the comments that were made at the public hearing. I guess, and that they were going to finalize it this week or next week. So what, and this is up to the board. I'm not trying to tell you what to do. All I'm suggesting is that it's important, and that I suspect that it may be within your power to comment on the draft decision, because you commented on the plans, you commented on the rest of the submission, and the approval of the project is an important part of the various boards' involvement in the project. That's all.
I agree with.
I understand what you're saying.
I agree with you. I just don't think there's any opportunity to make any changes now, because they've already.
Well, they haven't finalized the condition. They said they were going to be finalized from comments, you know, this week.
But there's no further comment on it. The ZBA.
The board isn't allowed to comment?
The zoning board is, is.
No, and the planning board isn't allowed to comment?
No.
You got to go to the mic again.
I don't think so. Okay, thank you.
The board has its own sort of job and what you do. I'm just suggesting, could address some of the comments that were made.
I, you're.
I just did address some of the questions that were made by the board.
Absolutely, I agree. Okay.
Can I just point out one thing, so everybody's aware? These decisions usually have a list of documents received during the public hearing process. So there should, you know, the documents that the Planning Board provided should be identified in that decision. I didn't look at that yet. But typically, like our decisions, we list, you know, documents received and findings, et cetera.
Anything else on 120? Mr. Maria?
I just have one question. So in all this, do we expect them to come back to the Planning Board anytime soon?
Well, as soon as that lot is subdivided, they'll need to come back for site plan, because it's a different site. Right now, it's still the same site. It hasn't been subdivided. Still one lot. And that's what Town Council has said all along. Anything else on that? 250 Turnpike. 40B, yeah. Discussion item, status. So there due sometime this week, Wednesday? Let me look. Yes, Wednesday, the 18th. And they just submitted new plans for 32 townhouse units. And at the ZBA meeting on the 11th discussing 120, they indicated that they would want to continue without finding on the 250 40B on Wednesday.
So the 1218, the ZBA meeting on the 18th, they've already asked to continue?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a quick question on that. So the 250, on my quick tertiary glance at what was submitted with the 32 townhomes, stuff shifts in the current, their 250 contractor. So my, so what we're waiting for is Fos O'Neill, is a set of plans that don't reflect what they've just shown in this new 40B?
Conferis Development.
Correct.
Right.
So will they have to submit, so will that impact, I guess we can't talk about it until 7:00? Okay.
Well, we, they have requested to continue without testimony.
Oh, okay.
So. So in looking at the plans, I think we're aware of some of the differences, but it's my understanding that, you know, they're working on a lit application, and we'll see what they propose, if they're making any other changes to the site plan as well.
Thank you.
To your point, it appears that there are 40B townhouse units on the lot that is supposed to contain the contractor's bay. So that will have to be cured.
Right. Okay.
Anything else on that? Next item, discussion item 352 Turnpike 40B status. I don't, there's nothing here, still waiting for.
Mass Housing's response to comments made on the application. So the next step is, I believe.
Their eligibility letter?
Eligibility letter, yep.
Yep. So next item on the agenda, we still. We'll go to 710. The planners report.
Marnie was designated to work with me on the fiscal year '26 budget for Planning Board. So I prepared an updated budget for fiscal year '26, and Marnie and I reviewed it, and then I distributed to the Planning Board members, I believe, and there's also a copy in your packet for reference. The bottom line basically includes the salary increases for the year, the COLA and the STEP increases. And then we actually have just a minor reduction in general. We added some funding for zoning amendment, public outreach, and reduced some little things like, I think it was like out-of-state travel. Like, I don't do a lot of out-of-state travel. And there's another line item for mileage and such. Yeah, the notary thing. It was only $60 to renew the notarization certificate for Colleen, which is every five or six years or something like that. So very minor changes, but beefed up the contract services a little bit. We carried an increased amount per meeting for recording clerk because originally, we had like $125 a meeting on average. But averaging out for the last year, the meetings were longer, so it's up to like $175 a meeting. So, and we reduced, yeah, and there were more meetings. So we balanced it out, so we didn't have to change much there. So I think the budget looks good. We want to try and maximize the projects that we have under that, like the open space monitoring program, which we'll be having an up-and-coming presentation in one of the next meetings for fiscal year '24's open space report. They'll be here, and they'll give a short rundown of the places they visited. And they also created a guidance document for encroachments and how to update the public and stuff like that. They started a, they created a preliminary draft for that. But that's a whole nother topic. I go off-topic. So the budget looks good. I think, Marnie, you were happy with it, right? And it was submitted on time?
Yeah, I think overall, there was no guidance, top-down guidance around budget increase, which in corporate world, like, there's guidance. So I was a little surprised. But I think you kept it very reasonable. Considering cost of living, inflation increases, I think it was like a 4.5%. It was a total 5% increase.
2% STEP and 3% COLA, cost of living. And those are based on charts that were approved under the first Personnel Board meeting recently, and then the last year's town meeting or this past town meeting's personnel updates to the SAP.
So those were personnel, so that was 5%, but overall guidance. So I think you came in below that 5% overall in your entire budget. So I think that's one is a win. And I also think it just shows, you know, prioritization and discretionary selection on how we, you know, Karina invests in our budget. So I thought it was a great job, and it was in on time. So hopefully, we don't have anything kicked back our way.
Right, and as far as the ARPA funds that we have that were allocated to us, we're working on those. We're currently like halfway through the three tasks that were part of the ARPA funding. One was for zoning amendments when we did for the MBTA communities, and we've exhausted that budget. And then we're working on updating GIS mapping for wetland buffers. The GIS, the zoning map was updated. They're doing some other, they're going to be fixing any errors and additional open space areas on the GIS mapping. And that'll be good. And the last thing is, we have a consultant to do updating the deed research database with anything that happened new from 2015, to at least get some baselines in there because that's a very handy tool. And just hoping to get that together.
Thank you, Marnie.
Yeah, thank you for the help, Marnie. We did it, though. We beat the clock.
I hate budgets. When you volunteer, I was like.
Oh, and then just quickly, just reminder the 2025 annual town meeting schedule. Colleen submitted some accomplishments for the Select Board's last meeting of the year, the biggest one being the MBTA Communities passing at town meeting. Then we have our annual Tree City USA. We have the open space monitoring again for the year. It was the updated zoning map from 2006 to 2021 that incorporated the downtown district. So we forwarded all that information. And then, just to note, the deadlines for when the warrant opens, when it closes, I think we're on target because we're going to do the public hearings for the zoning amendments, right in line with a lot of that. So that's that. The on-call engineering consultant, the Select Board selected in agreement with the recommendations of various, the committee members, the selection committee for niche engineering. So a contract's been forwarded to them for signature by Melanie Atsuko, executive assistant to the town administrator. And we're waiting to get that signed. Once that comes back and gets signed, then we'll move forward with using them. Fussin' O'Neil is transitioning with us for many of the task authorizations that we have ongoing with them.
Just a quick question. Karina, when we talked about it, we thought the recommendation that you could bring to the committee was to sign on one but have one as ad hoc. What was the decision of the committee?
Just to pick one.
Okay.
To start, and that if that didn't work, we'd go to that. So that was brought to the committee, to the working, to the selection committee. I'm just trying to recollect here. And we had followed up with DPW Director, who has a lot of experience in working with many different consultants. And he said it would be, it's really in the best interest to have one. If we need another one, we can always work on that then, but keep one. Start with one consultant. We did bring that up.
Yes, sir.
Paul Carter, Six Hillside Avenue. Just in regard to hiring a consultant for the Planning Board, the decision of whether the final site plans, construction plans are adequate is only by the town's consultant. The board won't have any say about the quote "final plans." And since you were mentioning you're changing engineers, that's the context to my comment. So if you look at the draft decision, it requires, it says that we've got, you have concept plans, but they need to submit final construction plans?
Oh, they have their own engineering consultant.
No, this is for the town to review those final construction plans? Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so they do, they have their own. They hired their own.
Lucas or Land Cooperative?
Yeah, LDS or something.
But why would their consultant be reviewing the plans for conformance to construction standards and level of detailed plans?
Paul, are you, what we're doing is, Fussin' O'Neil is no longer going to be town consultant. So we had a selection committee to request some information from a couple of firms, three firms. And it went in front of the Conservation and it went in front of the Planning Board to, you know, recommend which one they felt was the best based on our feedback from having interviewed them. And it's that, it was that recommendation to the Select Board we're talking about. It's for any project that comes in with an application.
Did you say it was niche?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. They're a great firm. So, but I'm not passing judgment on anything relative to that. All I'm, is pointing out to the board that when they, it's in the decision that when they submit final construction plans, that it's going to be by the Land Cooperative, okay? So it's not their consultant. It's your consultant that is going to evaluate whether the final plans are adequate. That's the only, that's the only thing I'm saying. Nothing about your process or anything. I'm just pointing out to the board that when they submit final and construction plans, that it specifically says there's, it's going to be reviewed by the engineer, and it says Scott, which I think is from Land Cooperative. And what was Land Cooperative's role in the project? Peer review or what?
I think, yeah.
Okay, so I guess as long as it's peer review on behalf of the ZBA and not the consultant's engineer.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah.
I just wanted to point out that the board isn't going to have an input at that stage. They specifically said just Scott.
Yep, yep.
All right, and last thing quickly. I think this is the last thing. So, Marnie, at the last meeting, you had asked about 241, 245 Turnpike Road and the Car Condos project that was permitted a couple of years ago. I did receive feedback and forwarded to the email that they are still working on getting that, moving forward on that site. They have not given up. It's still on target. And the planning, and the building department has worked with them previously on any issues with people dumping there and making sure the site's secure. So the Assistant Building Commissioner, Jean Novak, is, you know, he's very familiar with it, and he keeps his eye on it, I believe.
Just as an addition, there's very large orange X's now all over the building, so that was a new development. So now I just, I'm just not sure who's doing this.
Well, typically, a big red X means it's going to be demoed.
Oh, okay, thank you.
That there's nobody in there.
Yeah, just warning everybody that, you know, that they check everything before they do anything like that, so. Okay, and then. The CONCOM is seeking two members for the commission. There was an email sent out from Melissa Danzer, Conservation's seeking two members, just because it's a public opportunity to put that out there.
Public, anyone want to be on the CONCOM?
And lastly, because of the Christmas holiday falling in the midweek, I'll be out that week completely, and Colleen will be in that Monday. And then I will be in the Monday before New Year's. But basically, the Planning Board office will be, the planning office will be closed most of Christmas week, except for Monday.
Question on, you know, when peer review stuff comes in, if it comes in while you're out, what's going to happen?
If I want to keep my marriage, I don't answer, go on the computer during my vacation. But what usually happens is I'll probably take my computer home. And if I see something, I'll pass it on. I won't do whatever.
That's fair, no. So if you, I guess an ask from my part would be, if you just check your email one more time before you sign off for the duration?
Oh, absolutely.
And then, and that way, we'll know, okay, now we're not going to get the peer review until the department's back open. And then we'll be looking for it at that point. You know what I mean?
Yes, and I also have an out, when I, when I'm out of the office, I do a, you know, when you respond, an out-of-office message that says when I'll be back and who you can contact while you're, while I'm out, et cetera. But I'll watch for some of that. And just like us, the other companies and such closed down a couple of days as well. So, and a lot of people on vacation that week. They take advantage of that. But we'll do our best to stay on top of those schedules. And I think that's it. We don't have any minutes for tonight. Oh, on the recording clerk front, we are close to getting a new recording clerk. We're in the process of interviewing a second person, then we'll make a decision. Vanessa Hale is working on that with me.
Have we reserved rooms for our 2025 meeting schedule?
I have not yet, but we can only go so far out. So I'll start that probably this week. I'll be able to go to probably February 1st.
But we can do McCallum Room. We can reserve this room. We're going to, what we typically do is we send Katie Barry, who is one of the people managing that, for the McCall, for this room. We'll send her our yearly.
Well, that's what I was just, for this room.
Yeah, we want to reserve this room.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
On the calendar, I can't.
The remote.
She'll take care of it because she's doing it. She'll put it on all the calendars.
For the, for the physical room.
So we don't lose our Monday meeting?
No, we don't. The Planning Board has Mondays, and I recall in the past.
We do until somebody else decides they.
Yes, and then we fight them back because Planning Board's an important board in town. We'll get that.
So supposedly, we lost a Monday meeting because it wasn't reserved. So we need to make sure that they get reserved. That's all I'm saying.
I think we had, we were reserved for the physical room, but we just got bumped. You know what I mean? There was a, you know, I think we had the room reserved.
We did.
Anyway, we'll make sure, we'll get that all squared away.
All right, onward. The next item is a. 250 Turnpike Road Contractors Yard Building, major site plan approval.
So the applicant has provided an extension request to continue to the next meeting, January 6th, with Planning Board action to be had by the 10th. And we received an email saying they would like to continue without testimony. And this is the 250 Turnpike Road Contractors Yard Building that is with us right now for a major site plan approval. They've indicated that they're working on, through email, they've, in response to whether they wanted to continue or not tonight, indicated that they're working on their special permit for lower-impact development application. Can I make that any longer, that sentence? I'm sorry. I have to stop. Okay, sorry. And I just want to point out, it's without testimony. So Lisa had missed one meeting, I believe, but we're not having testimony on it tonight, so we don't need a Mullins form for that.
I had already forwarded that to Jim, and you were copied on it.
Yeah, that's for 2 East Main and for 26.
Oh.
Because we weren't sure if they were going to continue without testimony until this afternoon.
Got it, sorry.
We just want to make sure you were good with those.
And I see that the proponent's attorney is in the Zoom room. Are you in agreement with what we said? Continue without testimony for tonight?
Mr. Attorney George Benon has his hand raised.
George, you can go.
Good evening, board members. I am in agreement. We are continuing this without testimony, and we'll be filing our lit application in a short while.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So the motion is for the Planning Board to extend the public hearing for 250 Turnpike Road Contractors Yard Building, major site plan approval to January 6, 2025, at 7:00 PM. And the decision deadline for this item to January 10, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Hulahan, yes?
Demiria, yes?
Brascio, yes.
Oh, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, 2 East Main Mixed Use Building, major site plan approval in 2 East Main Mixed Use Building, special permit in the downtown district.
Okay, again, on this, on these two public hearings, we have a Mullins form that was filed with the town clerk by Lisa Brascio for missing. was filed with the town clerk by Lisa Brascio for missing the December 2nd session, indicating that she's viewed all the information and is up to speed. The applicant engineer had emailed us today and said they would like to continue to the next meeting, January 6th, for both the major site plan approval and the business village, no, downtown district special permit for site plan. Right, those are the two. I got them right here, hold on. I'm confused here. Yes, special, so for 2 East Main Street, it's the major site plan approval, which was continued from December 2nd, and the special permit for downtown district, which was continued from December 2nd. They asked to be continued as well.
Okay, so they just asked to be continued and they're not?
Correct.
They're not going to be here, okay.
And I don't see Mr. Putri or Peter Bemis in the attendee room. Yes, the public is here. I'm sorry, we, we found out today that it would be continued. Yeah, but I always say, say it's good that you stayed a little bit to make sure that it doesn't change the path, but.
Motion passed, the what?
So did you want to share that information?
So Mimi and I were having basically a catch-up meeting with Kathy Cook and Mark Purple last week and I brought up the numerous concerns about infrastructure, drainage, et cetera, and suggested that the DPW get involved in this public hearing, particularly 2 East Main Street. But I also, we'll save the comment for the next one. Because it might be quite challenging to support a project, you know, in the context of the infrastructure concerns. So I'm not exactly sure though, I mean, there's nobody in the audience or anything from the DPW tonight, right?
Yeah, so just so you're aware, after the last meeting, I emailed Bill Kundoff, DPW director, information that had culminated from the prior permitting for that location, comment letters and plans and emails, and sent that to Bill Kundoff and he responded that he would be providing a response to that, but he needed about a week and a half or so.
Right, so that's an interesting point that when this came up before, it was during Karen Galligan's tenure. And I think that she was going to take some steps or did take some steps. I don't want to butcher this, but it had something to do with the railroad also and there was a step that the railroad needed to take that they did not yet.
Yeah, they, so they need, so the drainage goes under the tracks and in order to, to work, put new drain pipes under the tracks, they need to get permission from CSX, which they have not gotten yet.
So, sorry, Karina, did you get a response from Mr. Kundoff to this email?
I got a response saying he needed some time to digest the information and get back to us, but it's on his, it's in his queue.
I just, so I misspoke. We wouldn't do that. They, CSX would put that out to bid and have their contractors do that, so it's this whole big project which they have not acted on as of yet.
So is anybody from the proponent on, in Zoom? Okay, so I just caution, any deliberation personally, it's, I mean, if the proponent's not here to address questions or comments, it might not be, it might be problematic.
Correct, and we did receive an email. Let me, let me just make sure what it said.
Yeah, where, is there an extension form for that?
No, they don't need one yet. The, the extension request is just if we have to extend the, the deadline for planning board action.
So should I make the motion or what do you want to do?
Just continue to the next meeting.
I just wanted to, I just want to confirm the email that I received from him. Hold on. I'm sorry, I'm just want to see what they asked here today. I just want to.
Is it possible to ask some questions from the board?
They, they continue without testimony.
Yeah.
Is that what he said?
So we have an email from Mr. Bemis, who's the engineering firm representing himself for that project, and it says, as we discussed, please continue the 2 East Main Street special permit application to the next regularly scheduled meeting. So I believe they, it insinuates without testimony, so they can.
Right, so.
It doesn't say it.
Well, my suggestion would be if people have questions about the process or the procedures, I'd be okay with that, but I don't think that we would have, you know, editorial comment at this point. Please, go to the mic.
Steve Morrow, Morrow's Village Cafe, 2 Main Street. My question, I guess, is can he go ahead and do this again the next meeting and have us all come here again, driving myself over a half an hour to get here on a rainy night to find out that the meeting's not happening? Can this happen again?
So it would seem highly unlikely that that would happen because by then, we should have the peer review comments.
So even if he does not show, you would still go ahead and proceed with the meeting? Can he bow out of the meeting again, that same day of the meeting?
Well, so the.
There's some kind of a format that you need to follow.
Well, at the last meeting.
That's right.
It was pretty clear that we may not have the, the peer review comments back by tonight and so he wouldn't be making any changes to his plan, so there'd be no new information for tonight if those peer review comments did not come back.
Yeah, I guess my, my question is, can we be notified if this happens again so we don't have to take time out of our schedule to come here for no meeting?
Sure.
How, how would that happen? What is the procedure?
Put your email up on this sheet right here.
This very fancy sheet.
The other question, I guess, is does he have a timeframe as to when he can cancel out of the meeting?
Can I speak to that a little bit? So I'm sorry that you didn't have the updated information. So at the last planning board meeting on December 2nd, at the end of the public hearing discussion time, it was, there was a motion to continue and they had agreed that, in public, that if we had not received the Fussin O'Neil review comments yet, which we hadn't, that they would continue, they had agreed to continue as not to waste time tonight on any deliberation. So I'm sorry that we, we anticipate, we were hoping to get something from Fussin O'Neil, but there's no guarantee when we get that. All right, but we will, maybe we can post something on the agenda too, if it's continued differently.
Anyone wants to sign the email address, just send it here. Just come up and sign.
Yes, sir.
Hi, John Walter, 6 Newton Street. And this may or may not need to bleed over into the next meeting, but we had a discussion about potential sightline obstructions approaching the intersection. And I was curious if there's any way that we could do some kind of temporary object, whether it's a shipping container or a temporary wall or something, so we could have an actual visual representation of what the corner of this building might represent, so we could actually see what this really means in practice for this particular corner. And you may say, let's deal with that next meeting? That's fine, I'm just.
Yeah, so that would, that would be something we would ask from the proponent if he could somehow show that.
Sure, perfect. That's all I got for now. Next one.
Actually, can I ask a quick question? So we did receive comment back. When we get information back, do we post that on the public website? Because didn't we get a letter saying about sightline obstruction from either police or fire on the 2 East Main? Someone commented on that.
Hold on. Just can't remember it.
So I feel like there was some authority that provided feedback to us. And then the question is, just how do you get the most recent information?
So usually, usually when we get those, they're put into the meeting packet next to the agenda, right? So that was the December 2nd meeting. We got the building department letter and.
It's obviously not a wall, but.
Fire Department was December 5th, so I believe they said there wasn't anything unusual there, but I have to just look, hold on. I'm sorry.
But those links on the town website, I don't know if you guys go to the town website, you can look up the planning board, there's the agenda and there's the packet that goes with it. Though if there's letters that we get, that we have just received, it'll always be in there, just as a point of reference.
Yeah, and not always. Once in a while we have an oversight, you know, we miss putting up there. So we're not obligated to put it in there technically, but we like to put everything in there, so we will do a better job at making sure all those comment letters are in there. Typically, they've been in the past, so my apologies if that letter isn't in there. But there, it was, we did receive an email that said Captain Dano had reviewed it with the chief and they didn't have any concerns with the plans. The building is so close to the street that we would just take over the street if there is an incident, and that was talking about access around the building, being able to get to three sides of it. So that is there and said, this is common practice. There looks to be access to three sides to the building, which is ideal for us. We have no issues or concerns. And then we've attached a site plan review form as requested. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to address them. So then there's their standard memo that has like when fire sprinklers are required, clearance vertically under trees, things like that. And they need a certain width in order to access around the building, things like that is in there.
I'm just thinking about line of sight.
Yeah, there was no comment to that, but what I can do is, I have your email, I'll forward, we'll include that fire department memo letter in there, so you can look at it directly, and we'll post it up in the next packet.
Karina, wouldn't line of sight fall under the police department versus the fire?
Oh, yes, yes. So we don't have any feedback from the police department yet.
Could we maybe follow up and see if they have any comments? Just because a question's already been raised, it might be proactive for our next meeting? Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Jamie Falcone. I'm a, live on Newton Street, lifelong member, 53 years. I did have a question about how the board was going to address the fact that we brought up to Mr. Bemis that there was over, well, actually, you know, we have a brand new bylaw in the center of town for the mixed use and he's going to go like, what, four apartments upstairs, which is like 40, you know, you guys allow 40%, but I guess he wants more than the, you know, he wants 100, 3,000 square feet downstairs, 3,000 square feet upstairs. How is he addressing, how is the town addressing that? Is that the special permit portion of it?
So by definition, the residential can't be more than 40% of the building, so he'll have to fix that.
Okay, so when he comes back on January 6th, you're expecting Mr. Bemis to have a revised floor plan for the second floor?
I would expect him to address that issue, yes.
Okay, all right. I think that's the only question I had. I was wondering, you know, I'm not opposed to the project, I'm opposed to the size and the scope of it, because I feel like it's not keeping in the characteristics of the town. And of course, I'm worried about the drainage, because I live right, you know, right down the street. So, but that's the only question I had for the board tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to make one comment, so we're waiting on the Fussin O'Neil engineer, so they'll go through what he's submitted and provide feedback, very specific feedback on the plans regarding our bylaws, regarding engineering, all of those kind of requirements. None of us have seen that feedback, that's why we're delaying that. Mr. Bemis will also see that, and so he'll need to address those comments in that as well. So it will be more than likely that there will be other things he has to address. So whether or not the plans are updated, we don't know.
Mr. Falcone, if you could just put your email on the sheet up here, then we can make sure that you get the information. Thank you. Anything else on?
So I move that the planning board extend the public hearing for 2 East Main Street Mixed Use Building, major site plan approval and special permit downtown district to January 6th at 7:10 PM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes?
Demiria, yes?
Brascio, yes. Thank you all for coming out.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sorry about that.
You're welcome to call the planning office at any time if you have a question or if you're thinking of anything that is troubling you, we'll try to answer it there too.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. 26 Meadow Lane, Reservoir Meadows, major site plan approval in 26 Meadow Lane, Reservoir Meadows, special permit, low impact development, and 26 Meadow Lane, Reservoir Meadows, special permit for major residential development, flexible development. Karina?
Okay. All right, first I'd like to just point out that Lisa Brascio provided the Mullins forms and filed them with the town clerk regarding a missed session on December 2nd, indicating that she's reviewed all the information necessary to continue as a voting member of the planning board. For this instance, we also received an email from the applicant's engineer to continue the public hearing, that they would not be attending this evening. I don't see Mr. Putri or Mr. Bemis in the attendees room. And again, we received that information today. But just to clarify, it was at the prior public hearing on December 12th that they had agreed with the planning board that had no Fussin O'Neil comments been received prior to this meeting, which we were, you know, weren't really anticipating with the timeframe, that they would continue the meeting. So that was announced at the last planning board meeting as well.
So I know that you had asked about the previous agenda item with the DPW. Is there any DPW outreach regarding this agenda item?
Yeah, I'm waiting for a comment letter from him as well.
For this too?
Yeah. And we're waiting for the Fussin O'Neil review comments too. I will remind him about this one. He had some minor concerns about a water line along Valley Road and a discharge point that had some puddling or something near it in the past. So I did discuss it with him on the phone, but we'll, we'll try and get that something in writing. Let me just see if I had received anything else. We had received from a resident on 7 Granual Road, some general questions about open space that were triggered by her hearing the last meeting on this. It was Eileen Sandberg, 7 Granual Road. And I answered those questions and she was satisfied with those, and I think I sent those to the planning board. And, yep, Bill said he would draft a comment letter regarding his. Bill said he would draft a comment letter regarding his comments for 26 Main, telephone notes. And Open Space Preservation Commission Chair Freddie Gillespie also indicated that, you know, sometimes it's tough for them to get a quorum with their group, but they were going to review information. In that, in the past, the planning board recommended that a major residential development project proponents need meet with the Open Space Preservation Commission to go over with open space requirements. So I mentioned that at the last meeting as well.
I think, I think Mr. Bemis committed to meeting with them at the last meeting.
Yeah, yeah. So that's all the information we received to date. I don't believe we, let me see if we got the fire department in here. I can tell you right away. Nope, that was it. There were no other town department comments.
Any further comment on this?
So I move that the planning board extend the public hearing for 26 Meadow Lane Reservoir Meadows, Major Site Plan Approval, Special Permit Low-Impact Development, Special Permit Major Residential Development/Flexible Development to January 6th at 7:15 PM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes?
Demiria, yes.
Brascio, yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the planning board wish the town of Southboro a happy holiday season.
I second that, Mr. Stein.
Any further wishes? All in favor? Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes? Demiria, yes?
Brascio, yes.
And with that, wonderful job, Planning Department.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful job, Planning Board.
Thank you. Thanks for all your support.
Thank you for a great year, everybody. Motion to adjourn?
Before, just one comment before we adjourn. I just want to mention that the tree hearing on the National Grid trees that was posted for the McCallum Hearing Room, the legal ad for tomorrow, is a Zoom-only meeting. It will not be in the McCallum Hearing Room. Zoom only.
Well, I guess I'll see you tomorrow, everybody. Move to adjourn?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Demiria, yes?
Brascio, yes.